Okay, I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Kenny County Groundwater Conservation District Order and establish a quorum. We have five directors in attendance, Director Palmer, Director Bland, myself, Wes Robinson, Director Ward, and Director Gaines. Directors Nelly and Shaw are not in attendance tonight. If you'd all please rise and let's lead.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible, universal, et in justus.
Thank you, please be seated. All right, we're gonna open up public comment. At this time, we've had one person sign up for public comment. Charlene Cavender, I believe is the name. Ma'am, what do you have to tell us?
Hi, sir. How are you? How is everybody today?
Quite well, a lot better than I have been the last few weeks.
I wanted to talk about number thirteen, the offer for the hundred and thirty-four lots that Mr. Potts would like to purchase. We feel that it's not in the best interest for that many votes to go to one person that they would get all of those lots. So we would like an opportunity to refit for those lots because when we first came out, we didn't, we didn't really think it through. We weren't sure if we wanted them or if we should let them sit or what we should do with them. And as we progressed and talked about it, we thought it would be better if the fort took those lots back so we could either deplat them, use them for, I mean, anything that would benefit the fort. It is in our best interest to be able to have those lots back so we could do what we need to for our members. Because at the bottom line, that's what's important, is the members of the fort and for us to be able to use, utilize that area for whatever we could use for our people. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your comment. Do we have any other public comment? Okay, presentation and acceptance of audits twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-four. The Street, you have the floor.
Thank you. For those that I haven't met, my name is Kevin Ead. I'm a partner with Eden Company in Uvalde. And I'm going to be presenting your audit today. It's gonna be a little bit different because we are, you know, we've completed four years' worth of audits. However, I'm gonna present on twenty twenty-four, and then there's gonna be a comparative statement, and if we have any questions, we can get into the other years if we need to. So if you go ahead and open up, you should have one loose copy of your audit. If you open up to page one, this is your opinion letter. You received an unmodified opinion that your financial statements are presented in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles. This is the best possible opinion you can receive. Again, best possible opinion. We turn to page three. This is the beginning of the management discussion and analysis. This is a letter to the, to the users of the financial statements explaining in a more narrative and graphical format of what is actually happening in the financial statements. It's supposed to help them gain a better understanding of it. If you're, if you don't have good financial senses, there are good ways to look in here and kind of understand what's going on. If you turn to page five, there's, in six, there's some graphs that show your different revenue sources as well as some condensed comparisons of the financial statements from this current fiscal year to the previous fiscal year. If you turn to page nine, this is the beginning of the financial statements, starting with the statement of net position. For you business folks out there, this is your balance sheet. And the way this is formatted is similar to any standard balance sheet with assets up at the top, liabilities in the middle, your deferred inflows of resources, and then fund balance at the bottom. As we go across, we start with the general fund and the adjustments that we have to make to the general fund that come to the statement of net position to be on the full accrual method of accounting. So as we start at the top within our assets in our general fund, you see that we had total assets of one point, one million, two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and forty-nine cents. Obviously, most of that sitting in cash and investments of one million, two hundred and seventy-three thousand, two eighty-five, eighty-two, as well as some receivables of groundwater fees and taxes receivable. As we go down to our liabilities, we had total liabilities of thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars and sixty-four cents. Majority of that is sitting in well-logged deposits as well as some accounts payable and payroll liabilities. As we go down, we have our unavailable revenue property taxes and unavailable groundwater use fees. These are deferred revenues that you should have received but did not of twenty-five thousand, two hundred and two dollars and sixty-seven cents. And as we go down to our bottom, that leaves us with an unassigned fund balance of one million, two hundred and thirty-five thousand, ninety dollars and seventeen cents. As we go over to our adjustments column to come to the full accrual method of accounting, we bring in our capital assets net of depreciation as well as our right-to-use assets, which are your leases, in our adjustments column there of one hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight ninety-one, seventy-four, as well as accounting for those lease payments that we made of six thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars and forty-seven cents, and then eliminating those deferred revenues of twenty-five thousand, two hundred and two dollars and sixty-seven cents. So as we go over to our statement of net position, that gives us total assets of one million, four hundred and seventy-one thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars and twenty-three cents, total liabilities of forty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars and eleven cents, and our total net position of one million, four hundred and twenty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars and twelve cents. Turn to page ten. This is your statement of activities and governmental funds, revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. This is your profit and loss, and it's gonna follow the same format as the statement of net position, starting with our revenues up at the top, expenditures down at the bottom, general fund on the left and adjustments, and then your statement of net activities on the right. As you see, if we started in our general fund, we had total revenues of six hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars and forty-two cents. Majority of that is coming from your property taxes of four hundred and eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents, your groundwater use fees of seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars, as well as some other miscellaneous fees. And another big one is your investment earnings there. Y'all, like a lot of other districts, have benefited from an increase in interest rates over the years of fifty-five thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars there. So we go down to our expenditures. We had total expenditures of six hundred and forty-four thousand, three eighty-four, fifty-one. Majority of that is going to be in your, in your payroll of a hundred and twenty thousand, nine fifty-five. Your science expense, which your hydrologist, a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, six sixty-one, as well as y'all purchased some monitoring equipment of a hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven seventy-two, as well as some other things. As you see, as we subtract our revenues from our expenses, we had a deficit, a deficiency of revenues of seven thousand, thirty-seven dollars and nine cents. When we add that to our beginning fund balance in our general fund, that gives us an ending fund balance of one million, two thirty-five, ninety dollars and seventeen cents. As we go to our adjustment column, we bring our, our property taxes to our levy and our groundwater use fees to the full accrual method of accounting, as well as the adjusting for our lease expense and our depreciation and amortization, as well as the purchase of those capital assets. As we go over to the statement of activities, that gives us total revenues of six hundred and forty-two thousand, six thirty-six, fourteen, total expenditures of five hundred, eight thousand, three hundred and seven dollars and nine cents, which gives us an excess of revenue over expenditures of a hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars and five cents. When we add that to our beginning net position, that gives us an ending net position of one million, four hundred and twenty-six thousand, six thirty and twelve cents. We turn to page eleven. This is the beginning of the notes to the financial statements. These are required by generally accepted accounting principles, and most of them you have no control over. However, there's some of them that I like to point out because it has some good information in it. So as we turn to page, let's see, we turn to page seventeen at note five. This is your capital asset activity. This will show you the activity within your capital assets of the purchasing of the monitoring equipment as well as the depreciation of the vehicle and the amortization of your lease. So you have the building and the copier machine. So you have your beginning balances there on the left, your increases to that, and then your ending balances there on the right. And as we turn to, we scrolled, go, go down to note six. This is a similar schedule, but just your, your lease, and this is showing your principal balance at the beginning of the year, the principal paid this year and the ending balance. As we turn to page eighteen, the top there, we show you the total requirements for those leases there for the six hundred and fifty-five, five thousand, or six thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars and a hundred and thirteen dollars in interest, which gives you a total requirement there of six thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars. As we turn to page twenty, this is going to be a budget comparison statement. This is showing your, your general fund actual amounts on the left, your original budget, amended budget, and then a variance from the actual amounts to the final amended budget on the far right-hand column. So as you can see, we had a positive budget variance in our revenues of forty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars and forty-two cents, a positive budget variance of three hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars and forty-nine cents in our expenditures, which gives us a total positive budget variance of three hundred and ninety-four thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars and ninety-one cents. And then y'all should each have a loose copy. This is not part of the audit. It's just something I put together to try to make it a little bit more useful since we're dealing with four years of information. And what this is, is this is a comparison of your actual amounts in your general fund from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four. And I just think it's, it's a good piece of information to look at. As you can see, you know, there was a couple dips, but most of all, our revenue is, is going up. And, and more importantly, you can see in the changes in your fund balance, there was a consistent going up. There's just a dip this year because of the large purchase of monitoring equipment for twenty twenty-four. And like I said, all years you received unmodified opinions. I just feel like it's more useful for me to go into depth in twenty twenty-four since it's the most recent year. But bottom line, you did, you did have a deficit in your fund balance or in a change in fund balance this year. However, you spent a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars in your general fund.
It was capital out, like.
That's right. So, yeah. At that, at this point, I would, you know, first like to thank Janelle and Bonnie. I know that this has been a little bit of a headache for y'all, but we appreciate it as auditors because y'all helped us out a lot, and I'd like to thank the board for the opportunity and open it up for any questions.
And you said everything from twenty-one to twenty-three, legal?
Yes, sir. It was, and so, you know, we do the same procedures for all years. So we went back and we confirmed your property taxes with the, with the appraisal district. We confirm all bank balances. We did expenditure testing, so where we take a sample of your expenditures at random, and then also we parse out the bigger ones that are automatically significant, that we test that all of those had correct approval authorities, you know, correct invoices, matching those up. Everything came back correct, so.
We were behind, but we're caught up now.
Yes, sir. That was the goal. So hopefully, we can keep y'all, keep y'all up to date. That's the goal.
I need to give you a standing ovation. That's a lot of work, man.
Well, we, we have a good team. So we, we've added to the team and we've, we're, we're glad we can help you out, so.
Extremely easy to work with.
Really appreciate this. This is very a professional job.
Appreciate it.
I just want to comment on how quick you got it back once, once that got ironed out and you started working on it. That was pretty quick to get that many years.
I'm very, I'm very fortunate that I have great teachers. My, my family's been in the accounting business for over fifty years. My grandfather was, I'm a third-generation CPA, and my dad's been doing this for a long time. So we got, we got good people.
I don't know who found you, but apparently they did a good job. That came back real quick. Anyone have any questions?
I will, I'll say that they do audits for a number of groundwater districts. We, we have a, had, had a good understanding when they came in, our operation.
I would move that we accept these audits. I don't know if we have to have an action on it, but I think we should.
It's an action.
Yeah, I believe it is. So I would move that we accept these audits.
Second.
Uh, it's been moved second and third and fourth. It was moved by me and seconded by Director Gaines. To accept these all in favor, please raise your right hand. Down, and any opposed, passes you now.
Appreciate it. The, the only other thing I'll need is those signed management representation letters, and you can scan those to us however you like. So I appreciate it.
We'll get your hard copies if somebody's running to Uvalde.
No, it's not a big deal as soon as we can get those, and I think you have those, right?
Yes, sir. I've got them right here.
Cool. Thank you.
As, as soon as we get your bill, we'll get it paid.
Oh, you already got it. I gave it to Bonnie.
Thank you.
This shit looks online, but I had it.
You need to do a public, you need to do an information request, please.
Yeah, yes.
Oh.
I guess you will have that shortly. One, look at one. We'll talk after the meeting. I'm gonna need to look at this one. Discussion possible action approval of minutes from January twenty twenty-five.
Motion to approve.
So that's my director Gaines to approve the minutes.
Second.
Seconded by Director Ward. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
That's the.
Uh, we're voting to, doesn't matter. All those opposed, same side? No, you actually have to vote. All right. Four in favor, Director Bland is abstaining.
You look safe.
Director Bland.
Oh, he was up here.
You weren't here, okay. I didn't hear of it.
Uh, Dr. Hudsonson's resignation letter. Uh, I'm gonna open a discussion by making the motion that we accept the letter. Are you gonna skip seven? Accept the resignation. I'm sorry. That's right. Let's, let's pause on that for a moment. We've got somebody else here that needs to probably do their presentation and get out of here.
Is, uh, we're gonna talk to.
Oh, you're talking about seven legal. I don't know what that was on there for. I didn't mean to skip it. Consultation, yeah, the next agenda item is consultation with legal counsel regarding any matters described in this agenda. I think it's on there in case we need to talk to him.
Okay.
Uh, I'm actually gonna go a little bit out of order. I want to jump down to thirteen because we have, uh, we have the chief appraiser here, and I don't want to hold him up, making him wait. So we're gonna bounce around in order. We're gonna jump down to thirteen. Discussion possible action. Kenny County Appraisal District offer by Chad Potts to purchase one hundred, I guess it's one hundred and thirty-four CAD properties held in trust by appraisal district that are on Fort Clark Springs. They're undeveloped lots. And the next one after that is discussion possible action. The Kenny County Appraisal District offer by Todd Tate. I guess you're not up yet. Okay.
Item number thirteen.
I don't know a whole lot about this, so.
I mean, so when a person buys real property on Fort Clark Spring, they're able to vote. So this person would be getting a hundred and thirty-five votes, which means they could probably swing just about any election area.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
I just want, for clarification, what you're saying is when they buy a lot on the fort, they get a membership with it, right?
Yes.
So, I mean, it's like, it's like different from every other place.
No, no. So these lots here are undeveloped lots.
Okay.
So they're in, they're just brush lots, often a brush, so they're not being developed.
Okay.
So they're undeveloped lots. But you're buying deeded property. So there's a deed that comes with a property.
How did they wind up on the tax roll?
Taxes weren't paid, apparently. They were foreclosed.
So what the association wants to do is they want to get those back so that they can use them for the benefit of the association.
I understand that, but, well, I guess what I was asking was I don't understand how the undeveloped lots on the fort wind up going for taxes if somebody didn't own them at some point.
At some point, somebody owned them and they went into foreclosure.
So at some point, somebody did own, and they were paying the taxes, and that's how, okay. I'm just trying to understand it because I don't know. Now, I, I had no idea there were a hundred and thirty-four properties on the fort, on the fort that were even.
He was trust. He would have to pay a membership on them, right?
No, I don't think so. I think all you gotta do is pay for the lot. You don't have, all you have to have is the property. The vote is tied to the property.
Huh.
Not to the membership. So a membership doesn't have to be paid technically. You just gotta have the deed to the lot.
So he wouldn't be paying assessments every month?
He wouldn't have to. He would probably be asked to. And if he didn't, I guess they would repossess them at some time, you know, if they had to. The process would start over again.
I don't know how, I don't know how it works within that membership, so I'm, I'm really.
Initially, the ability to vote goes with the property deed. Not in membership, right? I just learned that recently. In approving this, why is voting a consideration? I mean, I understand it would be for four, but in terms of just getting them back on the tax rolls and paying, why is, I mean, you know, a person could buy any number of lots over there if an individual wanted to.
Yes, sir.
So why is voting a consideration?
Two hundred bucks a piece, they go.
I think we're gonna have to get into the next item where we can talk to the chief appraiser because I, I don't know if there, if there's a process for them to go, but I, I can't remember. I used to sit on that board, but I can't remember all of the processes. I know that when, when they got, when they get, when they get reposs, when they get taken by the appraisal district, as I recall it, they have to go up for some kind of a public, solid bid or something.
These, these have been.
And then once, and then once they, yeah.
Oh, they. We're the last ones.
Yeah, but all I'm saying is, is once they do that, this is, I'm just talking about the process they have to go through, okay? They gotta do that first before they get the property, and then if nobody bids on it at the, at that sale, the way I got it, then they're held in trust by the appraisal district for the taxing entities that are owed taxes on them. And at that point, if I, if I remember the law correctly and it hasn't changed, anyone can go down there and make an offer, and then it goes to all the entities, right?
Yeah, I think that.
If I understand the process, that's a process.
And that's why it's before us. That's pretty close, Wes. And what I would add to that from my perspective and, you know, in my position as a Fort Clark Mud director or whatever, uh, you know, listening to what Charlene has said, and I've heard the other argument too, and maybe Mr. Tadle weigh in on it, on, I don't know, however, but something that's gonna happen is whenever they are sold, each taxing entity gets a portion of those, those funds, right? So if they sell for twelve thousand, we get, you know, whatever, let's say it's eight percent.
Yeah, whatever little piece.
Yeah, so, you know, so one of my thoughts is, you know, we, as a water board, owe it to our constituents to get as much as possible from this sale. And I'm not sure that all the bids that could happen have happened. I understand that maybe the fort is gonna bid, and is there gonna be a bidding war, like when you're at the, you know, livestock barn, and you know, I do this and you do that, and I do this or whatever. I don't know. But I'm not sure that this first offer is what would be in our best interests.
I've seen that, but they already had the opportunity.
Has the fort had the opportunity to bid previously? I think anybody had the opportunity to bid previously, but nobody had.
Notice, it's a public notice.
That's what I'm saying, but why didn't the fort bid? That's not.
It doesn't matter. They didn't.
I mean, I mean, I think they planned to now. Well, I know, but.
The sale could have been years ago. I don't even know.
Is there a timeframe? I mean, did this go on forever? It was open for bid and they didn't bid.
Well, let me, let me, let me just kind of, let me, one quick question here. What's the offer for the hundred and thirty-four lots?
Uh, I'm not sure. I think it's in the range of like twelve thousand or so.
Fifteen thousand?
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand for a hundred and thirty-four lot.
So if he develops these lots, say in the next five years.
I just want to know what the offer is. Okay, so.
You can't, you can't develop them?
I don't think they're developable. They're just like, no power, no water, none of it.
But I'm saying that that would go on the taxes.
Gentlemen.
They're all the taxes now.
Gentlemen, the improvement.
Please, if I could just have a few moments. It seems that the crux of this problem is this particular tax sales has other effects besides just raw land getting back on the tax rolls. That's what I'm hearing. Because it involves a membership. And so this is a little bit different. This is a little bit different thing. At the moment, I would like to just table this agenda item for a few minutes and go to the next one, which I should have picked first, and talk to the chief appraiser and see what, what other additional information that we can get on this. And then we can come back to it right here at this, this meeting, but I, I, I want to, I want to table this for just a few seconds. Agenda item. I'm, I'm gonna move to table this agenda item for a few moments so we can move to fourteen and come back to it. I need a second if anyone agrees to that. Okay. Everybody in favor of that?
Yeah.
All right, we're gonna table thirteen for just a second. Fourteen, discussion possible action. Kenny County Appraisal District offer by Todd Tate to purchase trust properties, Brackville Lot Forty-two. Oh, that's a different, completely different deal, isn't it? I thought, I thought they were related. I apologize.
You can.
It's, it's yet another one.
Okay, we got thirteen to do first. It's just the same kind of, it's the same kind of thing. It's two completely different properties.
Except this one's, this one's in bracket.
My, yes, I get that now. I apologize. I'm a little confused. Okay, let's just stick with thirteen.
Can we, hey, can we have him address us?
You can ask some questions. Hey, you're doing it publicly. Everybody gotta hear it, but.
I can answer the question.
Yeah.
So if a person bought a lot on the fort, whether it's a hundred and thirty-four one, and they build a house on it, and they sell that house, it goes on the taxes and people start paying money on that house, right?
That's in a perfect world. We're not, we're not dealing with that scenario. The issue is, these are properties that have been foreclosed on for non-payment on taxes. Once they were foreclosed on, those properties went through the sheriff's office on the courthouse steps, and no one bid on them. And then they were struck off, and they are now being held in trust at the appraisal district. Some of those properties have been held in trust. I think one there has been held in trust for thirty-four years. A lot of them have been held in trust for over forty years. And so there, we tried to move this forward to get the fort to do, we take these, and an offer was made, and it was not accepted. And through the information going back and forth through offices, the other gentleman was made aware of this, and he made an offer on them. Anyone can make an offer on, on any property that is held in trust that the appraisal district.
All entities have to approve that? Do I, do I remember that correctly?
All the entities involved in this instance, yes, which are the county, the school district, the groundwater, and Fort Clark Mud. Those are the four entities. If any one of them doesn't approve it, it does not move forward.
I thought I remembered that correctly.
Just clarification for other questions that came up a while ago. Through the sheriff's sale, there's no longer a membership attached to the deeds of these properties. Therefore, there is no membership on those properties at this time. And another issue when these are lots that cannot be developed, there is no possibility of development because they're in undeveloped subdivision because of the Colonius Act in the state of Texas. If the developer is the one that has to develop that subdivision for those properties to be able to be sold or built on it, sold for profit. Now, a private individual can sell the individual lots, not as a developer, to other individuals. But then again, that's another issue. Can you solve all these lot? I can't, no.
So Todd, what you're trying to, let me get a clarification on it. So there's a hundred and thirty-four lots in this bundle, right? And you as a, you as a property owner on the fort, there's quite a few here. Does that person get a hundred and thirty-four votes when it comes up to the voting on election?
Does that person get a hundred and thirty four votes when it comes up to the voting on election?
That, that, in, in my opinion, you'd have to, uh, consult an attorney that's an expert in, uh, property tax law. I'm not an expert in that, so I can't give you an opinion on that. But, uh, it's a possibility.
Have the other entities voted on this yet? Have they taken any action or not?
Two of the entities have.
And what was their action?
Uh, two were positive.
So if, if we were to either table it or go against it. Would then, uh, another party be able to make a bid on it?
Any, anyone can come in and make a bid on, on, on properties. At the, at, at the appraisal district, it still has to come back to you all.
It starts the process that we're in right now. So what, where it goes out to all the entities that have any claim to the properties for approval. So what they're, and what the fort's asking now. Is to come back and rebid. And the only way they can do that is for us to either table it or stop.
My personal opinion on that, that should have no bearing on this because there's not an offer on the table. The only offer on the table is the one you have before you. That's what you, that's the only thing that we have presented to you.
Yeah, but what I'm hearing right now is they wanna make an, uh, they wanna make an offer. So they wanna come back.
I, I understand. Yeah, I'm just saying, the only thing that my office have presented to you is this bid. This is the only thing that we have asked you to deal with.
Yes, sir.
But there's been two opportunities to buy it already.
Quick, quick question. Do we, do, do we know on this what the value of these are supposed to be on the tax roll? What is it? What is the value? What is the taxable value that we're talking about?
The original offer that was made was a quarter of the value, which figured out to be around twelve thousand dollars. So. These are the majority of.
I'm, I'm, I'm sure, I'm just curious what the value of the hundred and thirty four we're considering right now. What, what is the potential value? About fifty? Okay, okay.
The, the issue is, these are all undeveloped lots that have a assessed value of five hundred dollars.
I assume they're scattered all over the back of the board.
Mister Tate, you said there was a twelve thousand dollar offer or? Or that was turned down?
That's what the attorneys originally offered to the fort.
The attorneys, who, who's your attorneys?
The, the collection attorneys.
Offered that to the fort.
My Barker Simpson, go get him.
Okay.
The group, the firm that represents the appraisal district. Okay.
And what's the offer now?
Twelve.
Fifteen.
Oh, fifteen, excuse me.
I guess I'm still a little confused. How long has the fort known about this and why haven't they offered anything over the last twenty years?
It's not relevant to what we gotta do.
Sorry, I can't answer that because I've only been the general manager for ten months. And what I can say is that. We had molded over, we had talked, we weren't sure. We went to our members. We got feedback from them. Some were happy about it, some weren't. Um, and as we thought about it more, we realized we want those back and we're. Willing to offer more than what is being offered now. His lawyer did reach back out to me in an email, came to the forums. Told me I could fill them out, but that I needed to come here to make sure that it got tabled before. Or we won't be able to make it.
So once you make your bid, can this individual or?
I believe they can.
Anybody else, you know?
Yes, sir.
A man of means here. He could make an offer also. I mean, so is it like a never ending?
Anyone can do, anyone can make an offer. Once it goes through the process of the sheriff's sale and it's held in trust by the district, anybody can go by the. Appraisal district office and say, I would like to have a list of properties held in trust. I'll print out that list for you and you can go through there looking around where they're at. You can bid on anything you want.
What I'm saying, I mean.
Where does this stop?
Fort makes an offer and, and an individual counters higher and then.
That's not.
I mean, to go back to the fort to make another offer.
I can answer your question. It does not work that way. I'm trying to tell you. You, you, you start a process. It's, it's a set process. When they take those back, they have to go through a sheriff's sale first. And be sold on the courthouse steps. If no one bids on them then, then the possession of that. You know, they get taken off the rolls and they're held in trust by the appraisal district office. And as soon as they're held in tr- trust by the appraisal district office. Any citizen can go by there and make a bid. It's not, it's not the sheriff's, it's not an auction. At that point, once they make the offer, it immediately goes to the taxing entities that have a claim. Because they, they're owed taxes on it for approval, one at a time. It's not a bidding war.
But you're turning it into a war.
Well, no, they're talking about it, but I, I'm not.
I understand exactly what you're saying.
That's right. What we have before us is one offer to accept, reject. And whether anybody does, whether anybody bid on it before, bids on it after or anything, it's, it's irrelevant to what we're doing. We have an offer before us and that's what we have to consider. I think we need to stick with the numbers of what we're talking about. We got forty-five thousand dollars worth of praise value that we've been offering fifteen thousand dollars for, for these lots. We have been pointed out that there are some other problems with that, but that is not what's before this body. What's before this bodies, whether we put them back on the rolls or not. And that's what we need to stick to talking about. Well, anybody wants to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that is rejected.
Okay. Director Bland is making a motion not to accept. I don't think would be a proper way to say that.
It was a reject motion.
Yes. It was a motion in the negative, not.
Table, table to another day.
He was not, no, that's not what he said.
Okay.
Does that not accept it?
Is that what we wanna do, Wes, is make a motion to reject it or do we wanna make a motion? To accept it and, but I mean, cause it, it either is accepted or it's not.
I'm just.
It's not rejected or it's not. I don't know, does it matter?
I am repeating what, what, what my director has said to me, that's all.
But we're not.
I'm not making the motion.
Okay, that's fine.
We've got a motion on the table.
That's right. We have a motion on the floor. We don't have a second. Uh, anybody wants to discuss that motion or anything else, you, you talk about it. I understand what you're saying. I don't tend to like motions in the negative. Uh, but because they're confusing, but.
Okay, I'm gonna second it.
This is what he said. He's, he doesn't wanna accept the offer.
Okay, I, I second.
And you're seconding it. Okay, we have a motion in the second not to accept the offer to purchase these, uh, trust properties. By Mr. Chad Potts. All those in favor of not accepting the offer, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Now. Nothing passed or failed. Because it takes four members of this board to do any action.
I'll make a motion that we table it until next month, give the fort one chance to make an offer. I don't like the bidding war thing. I know, I know, I know.
Hang on, just before we make.
I'm making a motion. I'm making a motion. I'm making a motion. We table it till next month.
I, I will second that motion. I'll, I will second the motion and we table it until next month meeting.
Okay, can I make a comment before?
Absolutely. We, we, all, we, discussion's open right now.
So a motion has been made to table it. If that doesn't pass with four votes. I can make a motion to accept it. And then vote to reject it, right?
Yeah, yeah. But, but let's, let's, let's do this one thing at a time here. We got a motion to table this until next month. All the, um, both made by Director Gaines and seconded by myself, all those in favor, raise your right hand.
I got another question for you.
Oh, I'm sorry. We can't take a vote. We're still in discussion.
Right, the, uh, what, does the tabling, uh, will it be able to go back? For them to be able to put a bid in unless it's rejected?
I have no earthly idea. Uh, uh, it's not in my valley week. It, it's not within our, our realm of authority. We can table, we can table this until next month to make a decision on it. But as far as what happens, I can't tell you. Cause I don't know.
Would that be a Todd question?
I don't think you'd have the answer to it either, but.
If we table this till next month. It, are you allowed to accept another bid between now and then?
Yes, it's ultimately, that has no bearing on your decision here.
They're each individual, they're each individual answers for every time once it's held in trust, the way I understand it.
So the, again, the only thing we presented to you all tonight, it's either accept or reject. When a table, it's, that's up to you. The, the, the future, the past. Well, the past has bearing on it because we're trying to get off the past record onto a new record. But the future from here, that's inconsequential for you all. Your only view on that should be it gets it back on the tax roll, this taxing it.
I, I, that's been my default position on trust properties for a number of decades, generally speaking, but I've never had one. Talked about that had any kind of a vote to win with the property. Uh, I, I'm a little. I would certainly don't mind having a month to study it. Anyway, is there any other further discussion? Okay, I'm gonna call the vote on the motion and second that we got on the floor to table this until next month. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed? More opposition? Okay, four to one. We're table it until next month.
Yeah, I got a question too, Wes, while we're here.
Yes, sir.
If a motion was made to accept it. And it didn't get four votes. It didn't what?
Well, it's not accepted. We took no action. That's, that's unfortunately, and I tried to explain this last month. One of the really weird things about this particular governmental entity. Is that it requires a majority of the board to take any action regardless of how many are here.
Right, so.
Uh, it's not like county commissioner's court.
So a motion to accept that offer that failed, it's essentially failed. It would not be accepted. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. It, it takes four no matter what. It doesn't matter whether it's for it or against it. Yeah, takes four to prove or disprove anything.
Okay.
That's the way I got it.
Got it.
Uh, let's see, so we table that. Discussion possible action, Kenny County appraisal district, uh, uh, offer by Todd Tate. We're gonna go ahead and do that right now since it's the same kinda deal. Uh, to purchase trust property black bracket in Bracketville block forty-two lots five and eleven. Should take.
I've made a offer as any citizen is allowed to do. Uh, I just asked that you vote on it. I think it's already been rejected by one of the entities. So that would be inconsequential, but I still appreciate your vote on it.
Okay, let's see which one of that, that was. Seems like I can actually get to it, look at it and see what the offer is. What was the offer, Todd?
There's really no improvements on it. I wish I had.
I make a motion, we accept the offer. We've accepted some of them as low as three hundred.
I'll second it.
So even though it's maybe meaningless, I, I make a motion, we accept.
I'll second it. Uh, uh, my default position is to get properties back on the tax rolls and. A lot of them have to be cleaned up and there's a lot of work to do on a lot of them. So I, I wanna see them back on the rolls, but like I said, I've never seen anything with a vote. I wanna study into that. Uh, I've moved, I second that motion. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any additional discussion on this item, gentlemen? Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, pass unanimously. Not that did anything. Yeah, it kinda got cool, didn't it? All right, let's go to our, uh. Next big item, acceptance of Dr. Hutchinson's resignation letter. I'm gonna open the floor by moving to accept it because I don't know anything else that we could do.
Oh, so move.
Well, I got a second, but we still, any discussion about the letter or Dr. Bill's resignation, anyone wants to say? I'll tell you, I, I hate losing him.
Yep. Appreciate all the work that he's done and everything. I choose his choice, number eight.
I, I, I'll, I'll be honest and I'll say it publicly. Uh, when I heard the news, I was very upset and, uh, I was very mad at him. But I thought about it a lot and I know a little bit about what's been, been going on. With some of his other clients and consultations and suits and whatnot that he's involved in and where he's been the last five months. And, uh. The man's workload probably just increased to the point that. We're not, we're dealing with. I, I, I don't like it. I think we have probably the best hydrologist in the state. But if he, if he doesn't wanna work here, what, what are you gonna say? And he's not under, uh, first thing I did was ask if he was under contract or not. He's not, so. I mean, he can quit anytime he wants to.
Did he finish? I, I tried to pull up the, the, uh, Google Drive stuff that, that.
I had.
Couldn't. We have it in the office?
It is.
We do have it.
It is finished up through, if you'll recall. And. Somehow someone got a letter. The letter was sent from the board members on his resignation with. Somebody got a, managed to get a copy of it anyway. And stated was commenting in there about the sixty thousand that was paid to somebody else. Yes, he came to the board. We knew that he was going to use a geology firm, L R E.
Right, right.
To do some additional work.
The board approved that.
That work was done. That was approved last, late summer, last fall, I think. Uh, that work was approved. Everything that he has done. Up through, I guess, like November, including the geology report, is all on this Google Drive. I have been able to get into, to part of it. He said mainly he had done it for the benefit of whoever the district. You know, hired.
Cause he, he was gonna.
By the way.
Was redoing his model. He was gonna re, uh, rethink or redo zones one, two, three.
Just a quick.
And he was doing it, you know, by depth also.
Just a quick.
All that in there?
Hang, hang on just to, just a quick thing. If you use it, if you picked up that iPad that we've got. I sent that email to you. I couldn't pull it up on my laptop either, okay? But I sent the email to the iPad and I could get into all. Yes, sir. You can get into it, look at all of it. And what I, I, I'm not gonna tell you, I understand. It, cause I don't. But I did go through the files that you can open and look at. And what it appears to me, if I understand it correctly. Uh, there's about eight or nine different layers at different depths through the county. Uh, that is this geological work that we authorized him to get done by. L R A Water out of, I believe, Round Rock, Texas. Um, and I didn't even know who those people were until I saw that stuff and then I went looking for their website and, and they. Work for a lot of different states and all over the United States, lower forty-eight anyway, on water projects and doing geology and stuff. And there's some maps in there. I don't understand the maps that I'm looking at, but the work is there. Uh, i- if we've got access to everything that he did up until, like I said, by November, when he got off involved in the. Big lawsuit between Texas, New Mexico and Colorado and wound up in Washington testifying before the Supreme Court of the United States.
But Wes, let there be no confusion that the model that he said he would do for us, he did not complete.
No, he didn't.
Let there be no confusion.
I am not suggesting that, that he completed his work.
Confusion that if you.
That's why I was mad.
If you look at this, you know, and pull two little numbers off there, according to my rough math. Two hundred and ninety thousand dollars of our taxpayers' money was spent. In interest of getting said model that we didn't get. So I think Mr. Ellis is gonna come into the equation here.
I believe that's probably included in this.
If you want to pursue that, if you think that we have not gotten the value. Of something that we've paid for, we could certainly talk counsel about that.
Yes, sir. I think that's gonna need to happen.
Uh, I, I will also mention that. The monies that you're, you're adding up there. A lot of those are fixed assets, assets that are sitting right here in this county right now that we're still getting data off of. So it's not, so it's not something that we paid him. We, we, we got something for, we got a monitoring system.
But they were purchased to get data, to build the model, to make us able to do what we do.
And we still have to do that.
We do, but we're left in the lurks. It's like making payments on a big screen TV and then not getting the TV.
Well, you know, I'm, one of the reasons I was upset, David, is because we have been waiting for this report.
Yeah, for twelve years.
No, that's not accurate.
Well.
We've been waiting for.
Been working for us for.
If I can finish, hey, that's, we're gonna stop this right now. We don't need to be interrupting each other. When we're trying to make a point and that's. when we're trying to make a point, and that's rude for all of us. I don't wanna do it to you and I don't want you doing it to me. Now, we've been waiting for the report, the final report on this particular model phase. He did one before that. He was gonna be doing two, three after that, too. It doesn't end, okay?
That's true.
And we we got left in a lurch, and that's fine. And if you wanna explore that, we can do that. But as far as what we're talking about right here, which is acceptance of his resignation letter, we we don't really have a whole lot of choice, so. Uh, hey, you know, if unless we have something about the resignation letter, I wanna call the vote on it. All those in favor of accepting Dr. Hutchinson's resignation letter, raise your right hand. Passes unanimously. Okay. Janelle, you gotta talk it up. Yes, sir.
Yeah, of course, like I said, I haven't been able to pull this up, so I haven't seen what what he did give us there. But will it be up to the next hydrologist we hire to take that and then? I mean, you know, I still, I mean, did did we get what we've been waiting for in terms of zones and 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 what well affects what in his his latest best opinion?
What I saw in there, we did not get that, sir.
So it'll be up to the next.
I I'm not gonna tell you it's not in there because I I can't swear to you, I understand it all.
No, no, no.
But I don't think, I don't think what you're asking for, no, sir, I don't, I don't think that's in there. I think, I think we have to take where we're at with another modeler, okay, to pick up the data that we have and can keep collecting the data, keep collect, expanding our monitoring, whether it's about the rainfall that hits the ground or the water that comes out or the water that gets used. We have some instrumentation that the engineers have been working on so we can get real time stuff. You know, in the past, when they were looking at this and modeling it, they were looking at it on an annual basis. Well, you know, monthly pumping reports is irrelevant when you're only looking at it annually. But through the last four or five years and the developments that have been done here and the expansions to it, it's become relevant. Well, eventually, we're gonna move it to the relevancy stage of real time. And we've had discussions and talks about this in the past. Well, we've got instrumentation now that we might be able to retrofit the current meters and get radio telemetry back to the district. So basically, when the water's running through the meter, the data's coming in. And that's eventually, that's the point that we wanted to get to, and we're we're there. We've been moving that way. As part of that two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars that we've spent, uh, we have to keep doing that. We just gotta find a different guy to do it.
Did did Dr. Bill make any recommendation for a successor or, I I mean?
I have not spoken.
We look them up in Yellow Pages.
Yeah, that's, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm, trust me, I've been worried about that, but I haven't had the opportunity to dig into it, to be completely honest. And I haven't had an opportunity to talk to him about that. But yeah, I think we have to put up for bids and there's a, there's an action item.
It's the last.
Yeah, I think it's the last item here is is talking about uh authorization, authorizing the general manager to publish your request for proposals from hydrologists. You put the, put the bait in the water.
See what you get. He didn't say anything to you, can I?
Yes, sir, he did say, if I might, he said that whoever the board hired, uh, that he was more than willing to help them as much as he possibly could. But as and provide information. He said if there was additional information that he had that maybe wasn't provided in here, he would be more than happy to provide that to them. There's a lot of, a lot of things tagged into this, a lot of pertaining to social media. I'll just say that and leave it at that. It's unfortunate, it's it's our loss.
While we're on that, we might as well, I don't wanna delay this too long. And I don't know, Janelle, if you wanna comment on this today or not. But he starts his resignation letter and every, it's public record. As we have discussed on several telephone calls, is with great regret that I'm writing to resign. What does he mean by as we have discussed on several telephone calls? He didn't talk to me. I don't know if he talked to you.
I have not.
Who he talked to, I don't know if he talked to you, but I mean.
I haven't talked to Dr. Hutchinson.
Talking about talking to you.
Yes.
And so my read on this is, as we discussed, you and he he didn't allude to resigning before. The only time he alluded to resigning was with this letter. I don't know.
Okay, the day before he sent the letter, he advised me he was going to be sending, that he was gonna be sending something in writing. Or maybe it was two days before. Yes, we had had several conversations about he had grave concerns because this, anytime he would come, and I'll be quite frank and honest with with what he said, and I don't think he would mind me saying it. Uh, anytime he would come and give a a presentation or submit something in writing, then there were those that twisted it around, hate to say they outright lied, but they they twisted it around and misused what he said for their own advantage, is what it appeared. Uh, one of the straws that I think kinda broke the camel's back was some poster that came out and misquoted him grossly. And he had, he is not accustomed to the other groundwater districts he works with. He works with a lot of the groundwater management areas as consultant. And dealing with people that come, they may have disagreements, discussions and so forth, but none of this everything on Facebook fashion and for short, lack of a better word, line about and twisting things that he had said many times.
I wanna, I wanna pull this back in real quick, cause we've already accepted the resignation letter. And these are discussions that you can have in private outside of our board meetings, cause it really, there's no action for us to take on that.
No, there's not.
And we've got some other things.
But I want Mr. Palmer to understand.
Well, I think you answered this question pretty good.
That's enough.
Uh, I I I do, and we need to move on. And I wanna go ahead, Janelle, I wanna go ahead and go to your report because we got it down here at the bottom and you've got some stuff in here that looks like it's fairly important. I'd like to go ahead and jump down to your report and do that, and then we'll get back in order and get the rest of this stuff done.
I had my stuff in order here and you jumped again.
I know I did. Well, we didn't get a chance to talk before the posting. I wanna get your, I wanna get your report back up towards the top of the meetings. Cause I, I don't think we, sometimes you have something important to say. I don't, I don't wanna wait until the end.
Okay, alright. Uh, since the last board meeting, there have been no applications for exempt wells. Pardon me. As a matter of fact, the last applications for exempt wells that we had come in were last October. Um, meetings, the Region J meeting was, the last one was held January thirtieth. We were unable to, uh, I was unable to attend. It was tied up with various audit work and other things, so was not able to attend. Got in on part of it, uh, on Zoom.
Was Marty able to get, are you on the date?
Work, working on the same stuff I was.
So you sure was the auditor.
Yes, yes, but we got in on part of it. Um, GMA seven and GMA three are having a joint meeting uh next Wednesday in Fort Stockton. Um, what, and they do this ever, I guess, every four years, maybe. Uh, the last one is in twenty-one, I believe. Um, each one of the members of the two GMAs will be presenting their management uh, plans, explaining their management plan or whatever. So that that takes a little time, but not a, it's it's joint meeting and that's the purpose of it. Another thing that will be coming up at the uh, meeting, the consultant for GMA seven will will be there for a bunch of present well, annual, let's see, wait a minute. Uh, next steps in the joint planning process and mat, and modeling work. Um, incidentally, Dr. Hutchinson is the consultant for GMA seven. Um, uh, let's see, another thing that um that GMA seven and GMA three have got pulled into is, not really pulled into, um, with the Middle Takos Groundwater District. They've got a not a lawsuit, not really a lawsuit at this point. Well, it is a lawsuit. Uh, but there's an individual, a big con farmer out there that has uh, feels like he's been treated unfairly. Um, cockroil. Um, the, an another con farmer, a big water rights holder out in that area is supporting the district. Cause he too had had some issues with the district, but they managed to work out their differences and and move along. So this is something there'll be discussion on and uh some resolutions acting, asking for support from different ones uh to T C E Q, because this was this petition for inquiry was filed with Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. Uh, so that'll, that'll be interesting to see how that proceeds. Um, let's see, we are in the, in the midst of our state audit report. Um, we hear the folks, I I will say the folks have been easy to to work with. They want a pretty quick turnaround on things. So far, we've gotten, I guess, twenty-two requests from them. Um, they range anywhere from one, one request to maybe one item to maybe six items um, per, per request. Uh, they may, we may get something on Monday and they want a response the next day or the following day. So it's, it's kind of you know, but they've got a job to do too. So I'm, I'm, I'm glad we've got our our external audits taken care of because we were trying to work on both of them at the same time and it got a little little bit confusing because some of them wanting this almost the same thing. We got that behind us, so that's good. Uh, I did have someone, uh, back up. Um, they will be, most of it so far has been um, uh, all email with them. Uh, they will be on site the twenty-fourth through the twenty-eighth of this month. There'll be four to six, five or six of them probably that will be here at the office for that whole week, asking, so that should be.
So they are gonna come down. They didn't, they, I didn't.
They, they haven't come down yet ever.
I don't know about the rest of you. I've already done one interview, so they mentioned it when they were interviewing me. Uh, they weren't sure at the time whether they were gonna come or not. So they're gonna, when are they gonna be here?
This will be the last week of this month, twenty-fourth through the twenty-eighth.
Yeah.
Yeah, that they will be here in the on-site. Um, they have had, we've had probably three or four different kinda like a Zoom call with their team. There's one that's heading it up and then there's four others, four or five others that work with them. Um, it, I had someone after when I announced this last meeting, I had someone ask me if I was, you know, scared about it. I told them, no, there's nothing to be scared about. It's, you know, it's an audit. An audit can be very helpful if you're, if can point out things that maybe you need to adjust, things you're doing wrong, that need to be corrected. So as far as being really scared or worried, no, we'll be glad when it's behind us. They didn't say it would probably be sometime in, pardon me, sometime in May when they were through with the audit completed. So, but it's moved, moving along. Okay, so far. Keep kinda keeping us hopping, but that's okay.
Anything legislatively, the deadline for filing bills is coming up within a month.
I believe that.
Anything from Greg about any bills we need to be aware of, good or bad?
So far, I heard that we don't have anything, we don't have anything up that would, that would affect us or negatively affect groundwater conservation districts, but it's right up to the deadline.
So far, nothing from Austin.
I haven't heard anything. And I did, I did talk to him at one point about the public hearing and legislative stuff came up in our conversation and he said, as far as he knew, there was nothing up at that conversation. I haven't, I haven't gone looking myself. I will go digging.
No, our, our.
At the deadline, but.
I think March fourteenth is the deadline on filing bills.
Our lobbyist, I mean, he's supposed to alert us on it and and I've heard nothing either.
Yeah, I hadn't heard anything.
I don't mean Greg, I mean.
Yeah.
Right. I will have a, I'll try to have a better report next month for the March meeting.
Hey, let's get back. Oh, do you got something else? Go ahead.
I was just gonna say that Monday is holiday. And our office will be closed.
Good. Thank you. I won't come by here and pass you on Monday.
And I will be out of the office Tuesday afternoon and Wednesday for this coming week.
Alright, let's get back on track. Discussion possible action, financial statements, uh, item number nine.
Let me read this thing off.
Yes, sir.
Alright, so the total income was four hundred and nine thousand eight hundred and four dollars and seventy-four cents. The total expenses were a hundred and eighteen thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars and thirty-six cents. The net profit law, two hundred and ninety-one thousand five hundred and fifty-two dollars and thirty-eight cents. Everlorn taxes receivable, hundred and ninety-six thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty-seven cents. Expenses payable, two thousand four hundred and thirty-four dollars and sixty cents. The net, a hundred and ninety-three thousand nine hundred and forty dollars and ninety-seven cents. Accounts receivable, forty-three thousand uh, eighty-nine dollars and eighty-five cents. The general fund, seventeen thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixty-three cents. The money market, three hundred and forty-four thousand three hundred and seventy-six dollars and nineteen cents. Petty cash, two hundred and thirty-six dollars and forty-one cents. Well log deposit, three thousand seven hundred. Text pool, eight hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars and sixty-two cents. The F S B, the CD number one is a hundred and twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety-four cents. And the CD number two, two hundred and fifty-six thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars and forty-five cents.
Any questions or discussions of financial statements?
I make a motion to approve.
Now, we'll second. Any discussion, any questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. That's unanimous. Uh, re-monthly investment officer's report. I'd say this, but who's our term investment officer? Do we have one? Do we have anything in there? We need, you need to point out this?
No, um, there's some short-term stuff that we could move money around to, but it really isn't gonna gain that much. Text pool seems to be kicking everybody's butt right now, it looks like, so.
That's where we got the majority of our money at, so we got it in the right place, it sounds like.
The only thing we could consider is maybe moving some money over to text pool whenever these mature. You know.
Yeah, be an extra six thousand a year. It'd pay our monthly rent.
Yeah, for a whole year. Yeah, yeah, we need to do that. I like that.
You know, five hundred a month, which is damn near what we would pay.
I know, I know, yeah, no, that's, that's, there's no sense in not picking it up if it's not making that much money in a CD. Uh, I don't know when they mature, but yeah, we look at it then. Uh, let's see, we didn't, we just review that. Uh, discuss, any other questions on it or?
No.
Okay. Um, or man here, discussion possible action invoices received and invoices paid, item eleven.
Janelle, the payment of Kenny County clerk is at our quarterly payment for the.
No, sir, I I was going to mention that the last line item on your, your page here, the eight thousand six hundred and twenty-three dollars. Okay, we have an agreement with each election year, the even years. We have a contract with the Kenny County, with the clerk's office to conduct the election for us. Okay, by September the first, we have to pay like at least two thousand, you know, each year. Uh, which we did. Most years, that two thousand covers it. This year, because we had four positions and there were two people running for each position, it kicked that amount up because it was a lot more work. And if anybody wants to look at the, I mean, we've got several pages presented from Ricky's office outlining the, the, the time spent and so forth. So we still, this eight thousand six hundred and twenty-three dollars and forty-five cents, that is in addition to the two thousand we already paid. So it was a little over ten thousand.
This was their additional time because of the, the election that year, the
Yes, sir.
Contested.
Yes, sir.
Positions, okay.
Yeah, because it wasn't, and and for many years, we
Well, I would, I would expect, cause a lot of entities, I know, go through the clerk's office in order to for the canvassing and the election and stuff like that, but when they do that, and it's all on a big election. and it's all on a big election, I'm sure it winds up costing everybody more money because there were more candidates involved in all of them. And it was just more office work done. I don't know how they divide it up. If they do it by the number of candidates or how they do it, but I could see this last year being
Yes.
It'd probably cost everybody more money.
And because we didn't get this in until after the fiscal year and this been an odd numbered year, I didn't allow anything into the budget this year. Because prior to September, he didn't, they didn't know until after the election how much it was going to be costing. So I didn't put anything in there. So, but at some point down the when we're going to adjust line items and I'm sure there'll be some others that'll be adjusted and so we'll, I'll have that then.
We're going to have to move, yeah, we're going to have to make some budget adjustments to cover that because we didn't have it in there. I got it.
Because I don't want it to be over.
I'd like to make a motion, we approved the invoice as paid, but with the notation that I don't think we got our money's worth vis a vis Wes. I don't think he's worth a thousand dollars.
I can assure you, probably not.
Seriously, make motion to approve.
I'll second that motion. Let's be main, second, any additional questions or discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. That's unanimous. Thank you very much, gentlemen. All right, review the Texas Water Development Board drought index and aquifer monitoring data. Do we have the? It's not good. I don't like the picture. Where is it? Well.
At the back of it, he also has rainfall report system. Preliminary precipitation, preliminary precipitation.
We've got some, ah. Wow. We got better stuff back here behind, forget the drought monitor. Let's talk about this. That's our monitoring. Where the numbers?
Wow.
We'll have to cover later.
Yeah, I saw it up there. I didn't, I didn't bother to read it. I wanted to look at the data. Right there, you talking about fish? You hear from me, Kukai?
Yeah.
Okay, let's see.
You've got your numbers behind it.
This memorandum transmits water level graphs for automated monitoring locations as part of the Kenny County Groundwater Conservation District Civil Water Monitoring Network and includes data reported by the USCS and Texas Water Development Board. If you have any questions regarding the reported informations, or if I can be an assistance, please call me on myself. And that's from Jim Burton, our district engineer. This additional information that you got in your packet, which I didn't know was there behind the drought monitor is more info on what's going on right here in Kenny County as far as well.
What's the stuff in red?
Which, well, what are you looking at? Where did you get that from? I hadn't got there yet. Is that the pack? I just said, yeah, I'm looking at the dumb pictures. You get back there. I want to, I want to know what you're looking at.
Try that there, say, yeah.
We'll just jump to the end.
Do you want the stuff in red is to you?
Okay, here, we got a letter in front of it too. Preliminary rainfall comparison data by station years twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. This obvis memorandum transmits EKU CAS initial summary of preliminary rainfall data from stations in Kenny County and our surrounding counties. I did speak with Nat Leber, manager of Texas Mezzanet regarding the location of Kenny County's forty oh four three rain gauge. EA O three A, I don't know what that means, some parentheses. After confirmation, Texas Mezzanet agreed the location was incorrect and has since moved from the Red Stop area to three thirty four Tulare Road. If you haven't, so I guess one of our rainfall gauges that Mezzanet used has been moved to a different.
Yes, Mezzanet was recording the wrong location.
Ah.
And Jim caught it.
Ah, so they, they, the gauge was where the gauge was supposed to be. They just had it on the map wrong.
Isn't that correct, Marty?
Correct. And Jim's here.
Oh, great. Hey, Jim.
Matt's question. Here's.
Good, sure. Ask him about that red.
That is subject to change.
Hey, Jim.
You're on mute.
I guess that means the data is going to change here.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you.
So the rainfall summary that I included this year is, I got a call from Director Palmer asking me what was his annual totals for
Can't hear him.
The Kenny County network. Can you hear me okay?
Barely.
A bit louder.
Pretty much yelling. Let me, let me see my.
I think it's on our speaker, to be honest with you.
But I called, I got a call from Director Palmer asking a brilliant question because what was the total for night for two thousand twenty four for the Kenny County rain gauges that we monitor? And what I realized where we were going in the conversation was, did the district meet the DFC or not? Well, whether or not you met the DFC is you need to look at all of the rain gauges within Quad Eight O Seven is the way the statute reads right now. So what I did is I took this question and then combined it to include every rain gauge network that I was aware of that is in Quad Eight O Seven and then went back to Texas Mezzanet and and downloaded each of the rain gauge data and then put those in the annual screen. So you've got rain gauge data, you've got it not only for twenty twenty three, but you've got it for twenty twenty four. Just speculating that that's going to be the question. Did more rain in twenty twenty four than twenty twenty three? The, the, the rain gauges that are in red are rain gauges that are not included in Quad Eight O Seven.
There you go. So the red is not included in Quad Eight O Seven.
Yeah. The red.
Well, we've got them in here because they're probably something that affects the county or is in the county.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
There's, there's, there's rain gauges that are up in Edwards County beyond Eight O Seven that I think may have some influence on us. It's just, it's information they came, when I queried the whole, the geofans queried the whole thing, this is some of the information that came up.
And hey, Jim, it's Dave Palmer. Can you hear me? Thank you for doing this in the first place. It's important information, I think, as we, you know, try to figure out where we're at. Especially in Dr. Hutchinson's absence, but I guess we'll have somebody, you know, by May to figure out the DFC, but you don't know how the Texas Water Development Board comes up with one number out of all these numbers, right? The.
Um, the, the algorithm that they've used to do this has changed. And you can't just take an average. I mean, if you look at each of the numbers, they do, there's spatial analysis, but David, you've asked me this question before, sir? And I, no, I did not.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't think we know. Nobody knows. Well, they know, but we don't. Okay. Could be changing every month too. You know.
Some of the, there's a lot of Valverde wells, a lot of western Valverde wells, western north Valverde wells that are, that are in a part of this also. And so using Quad Eight O Seven, for the, for the DFC or for spring flow, I guess, you know, I don't know how the statute works, but you know, there's, there, there, I would not be, I think it might be a good idea for somebody to look at it and or understand how they do it. But that's the way we've done it. That's the way a lot of districts do it. And that's the data that we've collected.
Yeah, that's.
I can send, I can send you back to this data if I can, if I can, if I can.
Okay.
And then, Mr. Janelle, can I clarify one more thing? The location of of the, I think you said this right, but the location of the unit that they was reporting was the old EA unit Tulare Road where Tulare's well is, was, was good. It's just where they were showing it on the map was incorrect. And so if you were looking, the left long was incorrect. And so if we were analyzing that. The other, the other thing, some of these lives says preliminary so many, so many times is you really need to dig down into the number before it's right. We, we looked at some of these and some of the figures are missing in Jan, in January on R twelve in January, they had twenty four inches of rain in one month and it's, and the station over to right over that I think had five or six. And so you just want to go back and verify what, what the numbers are before you disaccept it. So right now, that's why.
Thanks for doing all that, Jim. Appreciate it. Thank you for all your data collection and work that you do for us, Jim. And yeah, that, that's really useful information.
You know, thank you, Director Robinson. The, you know, the work that Bill, I worked with Bill up in Kansas County also. And the work that you do and the knowledge that you get from it, it's, I, it's hard to put a number on because what this district has right now is absolutely, it's a lot of information and you're in a good spot. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
All right, let's see what we're in here. Discussion, appointment of a brush control committee. I don't know how that one wound up on there, so I'll defer to whoever put it on the agenda.
That would be me.
Okay.
And since you're slipping a little bit in your way, you said you wanted to volunteer to be on it.
Ah, I will.
So.
I'm an idiot.
I'll chair it. If you want to be on it or if anybody else has interest to be on it.
I don't have a problem being on brush control committee. I think it's, I've been dealing with that, raising livestock for a long time. So it's, it's a good program and I know that it puts more water back into the the system.
And then Randy had expressed interest in being on it as well. And I think, can we have three or four? Three, right?
Well, we can have, let me just, let me just say this real quick. We can have as many people as we want on a committee. It's, it's just, if we go with three that report backs to the board at the stated meeting, it's a little bit easier to handle that because we, once you start getting into quorums, then you have all kinds of regulations that you have to. So if you say, if you make a committee of three, whether it's members of the public or whether it's members of the board, they can go out and go to the GMA seven and three next week in Fort Stockton without having to do postings and and requirements of where they're going and everything. Just go. Go on a field trip, go do, go collect whatever information you got to get, come back, deliberate amongst yourselves. Make, come up with any recommendations that you want as a three member board. And then you come back to the board and tell us what you did. And then we decide what we're going to do with it as a seven member group. So it just, it's an easier way of doing business to getting into big four, five, six, seven, eight, although, you know, there are other times and other instances where you may want larger committees for individual things. For something like this, three sounds good. And I've got the ability to do that and I, I don't want to get too far into this because I planned on having an agenda item on it and of, of life has gotten me where I couldn't get everything done I wanted to get done this month. There are several committees that I'm wanting to appoint.
So do you want to hold off on this one?
Well, I, I would like to do it. I, I have the ability to do this and what I want to do is take this under advisement. And that way, if anybody wants, anybody else wants to be on this, anybody that's in this meeting wants to be on a brush control committee, they can, they can call me, they call the district, we talk. But I still want to set it to three, whether it's board members or combination or just, just at the board. We talked about it during this month and we'll get it all done on the next month's meeting. I think we need to have a citizens advisory committee. One of the biggest problems we had over the last two years is failure to communicate in between the public and, and the district. And so if we have a citizens advisory committee that can tell us what the public's problems are and what their needs are, what their thoughts are, give them another, another way of communicating with us besides just thirty minutes of public comment at the beginning of a meeting. It's, it's not fair that they don't get to talk to us more than that and our rules are set up that way. So I I want to find methods through the committee system in order to fix some of the problems we had the last couple of years. I planned on having it done and all kinds of things popped up, state audits and rules and everything else. So I didn't get it done for this month's meeting. But I don't have any problem with that and I don't have a problem with you being on there. Somebody else replacing me. If they want to be on there, I've got plenty to do. But yes, we'll do a three man committee. And let's just table it until next month and we'll have another one. And so I'm going to move to table it for those reasons. And then we can sit down and talk about it. Randy's still wanting to be on it or whatever and we get everybody online, we'll have it on next month's meeting for all of them. Anything I come up with, what we talk about, you got an idea that we need a committee for this? Tell me. That is one of the things as president, I can, I can set those up, get them going. We get some things done. We need, we need a bylaws committee. We've got some conflicts, got some things that need to be fixed in there. We got, the meeting day is on the wrong page, just as an example, in our bylaws. You know, we want to explore doing a committee for bylaws. So they can tell us what's what Ts we need to cross, what highs we need to dot in there, what little things we need to fix. We need help with that. We can't, I can't do all that. Sport can't do all that. So it's a way we need to do it. Put it on next month's minute. Do I have a second or does somebody?
Not an action item.
It's not. Oh, it's right. Okay. So we don't even have to table it, but that's, that's kind of what my plan was. And like I said, that, that was something for this month and it just didn't happen. Yes, ma'am.
Say something real quick.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead. It's out of order, but go ahead.
Somebody from the NRCS might be really good on that committee because there's so many government programs that help.
They've helped me a lot with my livestock and the brush control, brush management, prescribed burns. Yeah, that might be a good idea.
Sonora Research Center, Texas A and M Sonora Research Center up between Rock Springs, Sonora in here. They do a lot of work on brush control and then be a real good reason for that committee.
We'll definitely talk about that. Yeah, that might be a field trip for that committee. That might be somebody that you need to go talk to and, and get further educated. Anyway, uh, let's see, discussion, drought management plan. Unless anybody else has anything on fifteen, I don't want to jump forward. Excuse me, pardon me, I'm tired. Does anyone else want to talk about deployment of brush control committee? Okay.
Let me take the drought management plan with, with Bill's resignation letter. Some of the points he brought up. Also, we were waiting, part of waiting on this plan was to get his zonal stuff, the recommendations and absent that, I would like to keep this on the agenda for subsequent months. We may have to do it for several months and we'll get more information, but it's, it's brought up a number of questions. I don't think we can.
Anything that we want to discuss on a monthly basis, we need to stick on here as an agenda item so we can talk about it because that's.
Yeah, let's put it, let's.
I don't have a problem with that.
With, with where we are now, there's really nothing tonight. So put it on next month and it may have to keep going month after month. We'll get a new hydrologist and and let them, you know.
I have no.
Spit out a, a, a report based on, on Bill's.
I have no problem with that because we, if we don't have it on here, we can't talk about it. So.
Put it, put it on next month and we'll keep doing it until we can have more information for the basis of the drought management plan.
And Charlie, what you do have, I guess you, you've given us, right? What you came up with, Director Shaw.
Yeah. And what, what we were waiting on there was Bill to define, you know, zones. I mean, what, what I the whole board before was like a you know, starting point for discussion, but without the, the zone thing, I mean, we're really hamstrung. So.
But what, yeah. You know, what we were waiting for was the best available science to be that model.
Exactly.
I guess the best available science isn't that model anymore. Best available science that we got now.
It, no, it may be. But we, you know, well, we have, we have the basis for it in those Google graphs. I haven't looked at them. I need to look at them.
Yeah, I, I'm going to venture to say those need a hydrologist to decipher.
Yeah, they're not in a format that's, you know.
To fully, to fully comprehend, I would agree completely.
Anyway, but let's, let's keep it, you know, keep this on the agenda. And then the next thing on seventeen, discussion of proposed rules. You, you held, no, no, you held the.
Before we get, before we get to that, does anybody got anything else?
Remember the interrupt thing?
I just, I just want to finish that. Make sure we finish the item before we get to the next one. I just want to make sure nobody else has anything on that one. That's all. Okay, please.
On the rules, you were going to hold it open five days for written, so kind of same thing, we'll put it on next month because we have to wait for any written, you know, give people opportunity.
Well, we don't have to wait now. We don't have to wait until next month. We can have a call meeting after five days and we can take, we can take up that action item right then and there if the board so chooses. I, I, I just want to be clear on it. I'm not trying, but the thought process there was not try to. I, I, I just want to be clear on it, I'm not trying, uh, but the thought process there was not try to delay anything. I've been in a lot of public hearings, it's pretty standard procedure, I'm not trying to hold up the board until next month. If the board wants to come back on the sixth day, we'll set agenda for that, and we'll take this up and have our discussion and vote it up or down. That's the board's pleasure. Uh, so i- if y'all want to wait until next month's regular meeting, that's, that's fine. Uh, I'm just telling you, you do have the option.
Yeah, I, my personal opinion, you know, if there are other comments from the public, I'd like to hear them. So therefore, I would like, um, yeah, a discussion and possible action on the rules on next month, not just discussion, but.
No, 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 we gotta act, no, we, we, we've gone through all the, the procedural steps to get to acting. And so that's the next step, it's gonna be discussion, and well, I wouldn't even call it possible, it's gonna be action, we're gonna vote it up or down. Uh, because that's the stage that we're at, I mean, technically, somebody could motion to table, and we could wind up doing that, but it's, yeah, that's where we're at. So it definitely will be on next month, as far as I'm concerned. Anything else on the discussion of the possible rules or the comments that we proceeded tonight, because we can talk about that. Yep, okay. Discussion possible action authorization of twenty-twenty-five scholarship program.
I'll make motion, we approve the program as listed, because it's, the mail's essentially the same we did last year, and.
I didn't even look.
I added, I think two thousand dollars more in the budget, we've got a total of five thousand, five hundred lodged in the budget.
Do the scholarship program.
Yep, this has been ongoing for how long now? Ten years? Been doing this for a while. I'll second it. Uh, motion's been made by Director Gaines, a seconded by Director Plan, to, uh, authorize the twenty-twenty-five scholarship program, all, any discussion or questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, five zero. Discussion possible action authorization for general manager to publish or request proposals for hydrologists, I'm gonna open them. Moment of discussion with a motion that we do that. We authorize the general manager to publish and request proposals for hydrologists, you gotta get the bait and water.
I'll second it.
All right, any discussion or questions about it?
I have a question, where does that happen? How do you go about doing that, Janelle? Where do you advertise? Where do you, uh?
Okay, there's one thing, through the Texas Alliance of Groundwater Districts, they have a monthly, weekly newsletter that comes out. And down at the bottom periodically, there'll be things like RFQs for, requests for qualifications and so forth, so that would be.
That sounds like a ripe pond to be fishing in anyways.
And that's, and it, it, it doesn't, doesn't cost anything. And then this, next week, at this meeting, I was going, going for Stockton. There's about three different ones I was gonna go with, not, not hydrogeologists, but general managers and who they used and so forth. Kind of give a, the, um.
Anything else?
I just have a comment that, uh, whatever we do, we need to talk to Greg, and we probably need to have a written contract moving forward. Whether it's January one to the end of the year, whatever it is, and where we kind of set some rule, or what we, what we, what we want. What we want, yeah, and that way it just kind of cleans it up, nothing against anybody, but, so we can be more professional moving forward.
Provided that we can find someone we want in the workforce under contract, but I agree with you, we need to have a contract.
Some kind of thing where we say, hey, once, once this is done, this is paid, and this is done, this, whatever it is.
I didn't expect the answer I got when I asked if he was on the contract, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree completely, all right, I'm gonna call a vote on this, everybody in favor, raise your right hand. Five zero, passage now, actually, for those that are in attendance. And we've already done, uh, general manager's report, and we've pretty well banged future agenda items to death, although we never got to. But is there any other thing we want to talk about of, of future agenda item? Um, I was gonna talk about the committee thing there, but we've already kind of covered that, and, uh, putting the drought management plan, having that on there monthly, so we can, we'll talk about that if it comes up, or we get to a point with hydrologists, whatever. And the proposed rule, um, we have not, we did not, everybody's kind of, I don't, I'm not gonna call for both. Everybody's kind of in agreement to wait until next, next month to have the proposed rules, we're not gonna do a special meeting?
No, just wait till.
Everybody kind, yeah, that's, okay, I just want the, the one on the board on it, because it doesn't matter to me. All right, anything else on future agenda items? I move that we adjourn.
So moved.
So second, moving to second, all in favor? Thank you very much.